Welcome to the April 11th City Council Meeting. Please rise and salute the flag.
(inaudible) of the United States of America. It's a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the members, Councillor Cogliandro.
Here.
Here, Councillor Fiore.
Here.
Here, Councillor Keefe.
Here.
Here, Councillor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councillor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Councillor Nowosowski.
Here.
Here, Councillor Rizzo is absent. Councillor Rotundo is absent. Councillor Sorino.
Here.
Here, Councillor Silvestri.
Here.
Here, and Councillor President Fiscondi.
Here.
Here, Coram is present. Calendar item number two, approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of March 28th.
Mr. President.
(inaudible).
Counsel.
Mr. President, motion to amend, under the minutes for March 28th, 2022, the Ways and Means Subcommittee Report on Page 2 of the meeting minutes, Ms. Mary Gandolfo is incorrectly recorded as a proponent of the 22-019. She is an opponent, and her address is listed as 615 Malden, but it's actually 615 Washington. So if we might accept those as amended, I move that we accept those as amended.
So moved. If, the basketball team's not here, and if the councillors would allow me, I'd like to have a moment of personal privilege, if that's okay with everyone. For the past several meetings, there's been a trend playing in these council chambers where political posturing has gotten in the way of addressing, professionally addressing, the issues that come before us. The unprofessionalism, the sarcasm, the interruptions, and the side conversations that take place has gotten way out of control. And as council president, I take full responsibility for letting this happen. And for that, I want to apologize to the residents of Revere. You know, we have the honor of sitting in these seats because the residents have elected us to do a job. And sometimes, we forget that we are here for the people and not the politics. So that, moving forward, I'd like to enforce some rules that I think I probably should have done at the beginning of the year. For the past couple of months, I've given much leeway to my colleagues when speaking, and at times, I feel it's been taken out of control and taken advantage of, to be honest with you. So for, as of today, what we'll do is, we're going to keep to the three minutes. Each council will have three minutes to speak on an issue. Madam Clerk will manage the time clock. The point of orders are to be used if there's a violation of the rules of order, or if a councillor has veered off and is no longer speaking about the issue at hand. It will no longer be used as a way to interrupt, debate, or take the floor away from another colleague. I just ask that every councillor wait until I call on you, okay, if you wish to speak on a motion. And in closing, I just ask that we all respect the decorum of these chambers, and more importantly, respect one another. That's all. Thank you for that leeway, and thank you for that point of order. Madam Clerk, back to the order of business?
Sure. For calendar item number three, I believe the basketball teams haven't arrived yet, so we'll go to calendar item number four. Motion presented by Councillor Cogliandro that the City Council awards certificates of appreciation to Greg Vendetti, Emilio Fusco, April Feeny, Tyler D'Angelo, and Joe Singer
Okay. I'm going to give the floor to Councillor Cogliandro.
Go ahead. Thank you, Mr. President. For those of you who don't know, this program was started by Officer Singer, and this is very near and dear to my heart. Boxing is one of the oldest martial arts in the history of the world, and as a martial artist myself, this program really, really hits home for me. And they deserve so much recognition for this. WBC champ, former WBC champ, Greg Vendetti.
Current.
Current. Current.
He has a lot.
Come on![479.12][479.12](applause)
This man, and all of these people, they sacrificed their time to help these children and to make sure that they're being trained, they have an outlet to get exercise, discipline, structure is so important. And I just want to read one of these citations. "In acknowledgement and recognition of volunteering to run the Revere High School boxing program, special recognition is going to be awarded." I'll read the names off after. "The Revere High School boxing program not only provides an athletic outlet for students, but the program also teaches discipline, hard work, and respect, which are characteristics that will resonate both in and outside of the classroom." This certificate of appreciation is presented by the City Council of Revere, Massachusetts, and the citizens. I'm going to save the rest of that. But first and foremost, Mr. Joe Singer.[540.16][540.16](applause) Tyler D'Angelo.[544.04][544.04](applause) April Feeny.[548.04][548.04](applause) He is not in attendance today, but Emilio Fusco as well.[559.04][559.04](applause) And finally, the current champion, Greg Vendetti.[567.04][567.04](applause)
No, it's all yours. Madam Clerk, back to the order of business?
Unfinished business. Calendar item number five, in ordinance amending the revised ordinances of the City of Revere relative to drain layers. This is on the engrossment, the reading, the final reading, engrossment, and ordainment.
Madam Clerk, call the roll on this, please.
Shall the City Council approve an ordinance amending the revised ordinances of the City of Revere relative to drain layers? Councillor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Fiore.
No.
No, Councillor Keefe.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Nowosowski.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Rizzo is absent. Councillor Rotundo is absent. Councillor Sorino.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, and Councillor President Fiscondi.
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance is engrossed and ordained. Calendar items six, seven, and eight are all motions presented by Councillor Rotundo under the City -- I'm sorry. Yes, those are typically automatically tabled when the city councillor is not here to discuss his motions.
Okay. We're going to table six, seven, and eight.
Next up is the Legislative Affairs Subcommittee Report from April 4th.
Councillor Fiore, you're on this.
Briefly, Mr. President, the measure was defeated unanimously in committee, so the recommendation is that the ordinance be denied.
On item number 22-054, can you call the roll, please?
Roll call on the motion of Councillor Silvestri relative to the, to a home rule petition limiting term, for term limits for the office of mayor, City Council, and School Committee. Councillor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Fiore.
No.
No, Councillor Keefe.
No.
No, Councillor McKenna.
No.
No, Councillor Morabito.
No.
No, Councillor Nowosowski.
No.
No, Councillor Rizzo is absent. Councillor Rotundo is absent. Councillor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, and Councillor President Fiscondi.
No.
No, the motion fails. Next item on the Subcommittee Report.
Councillor Fiore, next item on the Subcommittee Report.
Yeah, if we could have it read, please.
Excuse me?
Can we just have it read?
Oh, sure.
Sure. So, calendar item number 10, motion presented by Councillor Fiore that the City Council commission the installation of portraits in the City Council chambers in honor of the first women elected to the Revere City Council. Ward 1 Councillor Rita Singer, 1975; Ward 3 Councillor Vera Curcio, 1975; and the first at-large councillor, Linda Rosa, 1987.
Mr. President, briefly, the motion carried unanimously. The recommendation of the committee is to approve the measure.
Roll call?
Roll call on the motion, Councillor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Fiore.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Keefe.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Nowosowski.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Rizzo is absent. Councillor Rotundo is absent. Councillor Sorino.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, and Councillor President Fiscondi.
Yes.
Yes, the motion is approved. Next up is the Public Works Subcommittee Report from the meeting of April 4th.
Councillor Nowosowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, on 22-079, the motion was that the, by Councillor Rotundo, that the mayor request the DBW Water and Sewer Department to provide the public with how many water and sewer repairs have been made over the past two years. The purpose of this request is to demonstrate the great work this department has done. Well, at that meeting, the superintendents were here, and they provided the last four years of activities. There were over 6,000 different work requests that they completed over the last four years. And the committee was very impressed with it. We thanked them for it. The committee accepted the reports and requested this now be placed on file.
Placed on file.
And, Mr. President, on 22-091, motion presented by Councillor Fiore that the mayor be directed to distribute Chapter 90 funds equally between each of the six wards. Superintendent of Public Works was present, Donnie Chermello and Paul Argenzio, and they gave an explanation of how the streets are determined to be repaved over this year and over the next several years. And everybody seemed to be happy with it. We accepted it. There's no sense in sending it to the mayor, so we asked that it be placed on file.
Placed on file.
Next up is the Zoning Subcommittee Report.
Councillor Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, we had two items in front of us. Both of them have come out with recommendations from the zoning Subcommittee. First item was 22-062, which was recommended as unfavorable on a three-to-three vote. So Madam Clerk, if you would care to call the roll for the full City Council?
Mr. President.
Councillor Nowosowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, as a member of the committee, I would like to submit a substitute motion, a minority report of the committee, that this be accepted as positive, that the recommendation be made positive to the council.
Okay.
So there would just be a roll call, it would basically be a substitute motion that's on the floor before the report of Chairman Keefe is taken up? Okay?
Mr. President, point of parliamentary inquiry, I mean, either way, we'd just be acting on the, on the motion regardless of what recommendation is there. It just gets confusing. We're voting on the motion, not the recommendation.
Okay, we're going to vote that?
Substitute motion still stands, please, yes.
The substitute motion stands? Okay.
The clerk could just state, an affirmative vote being what, and a negative vote being?
An affirmative vote would offer the opinion of the City Council as favorable, and no vote would be an unfavorable opinion on the ordinance. This is just for an opinion, a recommendation.
Okay. Is everyone clear?
No.
Okay, can you?
I think we should be voting on the motion. So the motion is yes or no? I mean, regardless of what the report is.
I know, but there's a substitute motion on the floor.
That's right.
Which stands?
So the substitute motion is to deny it?
Mr. President, true unit of clerk, so a yes vote is to accept the substitute motion?
Right, and, but my understanding of your substitute motion is, it's the, you would like to change the recommendation coming out of committee. But this is before the full City Council, not, so you're...
I'm doing a minority report for the, for the committee.
Again, one more parliamentary inquiry. The reports are the reports. We should be acting on the order that's before us. Reports are just given, we're not acting on them.
Can, I'm sorry, can we just clarify, and we're going to make the vote on the substitute motion first, okay, since that has, that's on the floor? So can we just clarify it so everybody on the council knows exactly what we're voting on?
Trying to think of a very good way to explain it where it's not confusing.
Point of inquiry?
State your point.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, for clarification, voting on this has no bearing on voting on the actual motion, correct?
This motion would have no bearing on the ordinance itself.
That's right. Okay. Okay, so you have to come up with this.
I would say that the substitute motion is a minority report of the committee to, to recommend a favorable, a favorable report.
I guess I'm trying to understand.
A favorable report.
I, I, okay, I guess I'm trying to understand the minority report. It has been reported unfavorably, okay, in the Subcommittee, okay? Correct me if I'm wrong.
By a majority, but there were, there were minority, there was opposition.
I understand, and everybody, everybody that was here for the Subcommittee knows who was in the minority. So what's, what's your point? I guess I'm trying to understand your point, Councillor, and the reasoning behind it. But go ahead.
My motion stands. I don't have to give a reason?
Okay.
I'm just saying, there's a minority report asking that the report be recorded as favorable.
That the minority report be favorable? You got me stunned.
Read the rules of order and Demeter's rules.
I have, okay.
You didn't read about minority reports.
Okay, so, Councillor...
So the motion by, the substitute motion by Councillor Nowosowski would be that the City Council, that the City Council change the zoning Subcommittee Report to a favorable recommendation on the zoning change. And then, so that's a substitute motion, so you want a roll call on that?
Roll call on the substitute motion, please.
Roll call on the substitute motion, Councillor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Fiore.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Keefe.
No.
No, Councillor McKenna.
No.
No, Councillor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Nowosowski.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Rizzo is absent. Councillor Rotundo is absent. Councillor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, and Councillor President Fiscondi.
No.
No, so the zoning Subcommittee Report is now coming out, has been changed from unfavorable to a favorable recommendation.
Okay. So we're going to go back to the second reading and do a roll call on the second reading.
I'm going to object, Mr. President.
I also object.
Excellent. We're going to table that, then.
Okay.
Thank you. That motion is tabled.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. President, before I, before I go to the second piece of the zoning Subcommittee Report.
Yes.
As a zoning chair, my question to you is, may you ask for a reason for the objection? What's, what's the reason for objection to the zoning Subcommittee Report?
I, good point. We can, we can ask for a reason for the objection.
I would, I would appreciate that.
Yes.
Thank you.
For clarification.
May you ask?
Hey, I don't think any member of this council should have to provide a reason to the chair as to why they're voting. I object because I need more information.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to know why you were objecting, that's it. Thank you for your response.
Well, now you know.
Thank you.
Councillor Keefe.
The second, the second item in front of us this evening was item number 22-063. That received a favorable report, five to one. There will be no minority report tonight. Thank you.
Roll call the vote.
Shall the City Council grant the relief requested by the petitioner, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review in the zoning Subcommittee?
Mr. President, on the matter before the council, I'm certainly pleased that the developers proposing condominiums, you know, with the overdevelopment in the city, it's something I wish it was done all along Revere Beach, so we'd have a little more vested interest. And I understand that something has to go there, but I am opposed to adding a story, I'm opposed to the additional units. For those reasons, I'll be voting no on the matter.
Okay. Is, is there any other comments from the non-Subcommittee members? No, seeing none. Roll call the vote, please.
Shall the City Council grant the relief requested by the petitioner, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review in the zoning Subcommittee? Councillor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Fiore.
No.
No, Councillor Keefe.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Nowosowski.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Rizzo is absent. Councillor Rotundo is absent. Councillor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, and Councillor President Fiscondi?
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted. Calendar item number 15, communications. Nicole Palermo, disclosure by municipal employee of a financial interest in municipal contract as required by Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 268A, Section 20B.
Do we have Ms. Palermo here? Councillor Keefe.
Have her come up to the podium. I just wanted to state, before she spoke, we, Mike, Mr. Machichi, the next one, I wasn't sure if Ms. Palermo was here, wouldn't, will not be able to make it this evening. And before, before she, I just wanted to make sure that...
Thank you.
Some of the, a lot of people ask why, why the, why employees have to come up for this special municipal status, which has somewhat been changed over the last year through the City Council rules. It's because they work for the city, which is great, and they're also, at times, either refereeing or coaching teams, which, as we all know, coaching teams for Revere High School or some of the middle schools, the amount that it pays, the stipend that it pays is probably somewhere under, I don't know, $5 an hour, if I had to guess, maybe even less?
Pennies.
Right? So I just would, wanted to say on both of these employees that I'd be 100% in favor. I think everyone would be 100% in favor, but their work does not go unnoticed, and we thank them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor. Ms. Palermo, name and address for the record, please.
Nicole Palermo, 141 Stevens Street, Revere, Mass.
Can you give us just a short description of what's going on in your duties?
So I have been the assistant coach for Revere High School's varsity cheering team for the past five years, probably. I volunteered five years before that. I went through the program myself. So I've been getting paid for that work through the stipends, like Patrick Keefe said. I started a new job for the city as the city's social worker, so now I'm a municipal employee under Section 20 of the Conflict of Interest Law. When you're a municipal employee, you can't get paid by two separate entities, and there's a couple exemptions, so under 26, 268A, because I work under 800 hours as a coach, if you guys vote that I, you change the position to a special municipal position for the assistant coach, then I would be able to coach and keep my position as a social worker, because the two don't interfere, because I don't work with any of the high school kids as the city's social worker.
Any comments from the council?
Mr. President.
Yes.
Just a part of inquiry, didn't we vote last month that all sports coaches would have automatic municipal employee status? And there wasn't anybody specific that we were leaning, it was just that, anybody that was a coach, a coach, or someone involved in high school sports would be given those, that designation, so...
That's what I was told.
I'm just saying that this is just, maybe duplicate.
Yeah. Madam Clerk? Hold on one second.
After we discussed this with the city solicitor, Paul Capizzi, and the Ethics Commission has to give advice to employees that want to have this designation, so whether or not they're a special municipal employee, they're still required to fill this form out.
Thank you for the explanation. Councillor McKenna?
And that's what I was going to say, it's, you know, I, when I was a teacher, I became a politician at the same time, and I had to, I couldn't take the check from the council. I had, it's a conflict of interest, so I had to go without, and, and I think the same thing with Councillor Silvestri, is the same thing, so, you know, I think if you work for the city and you want to grab another job for the city, two paychecks is, it's not in the books, so I don't, that's how I feel.
Okay. It's okay. Thank you.
Councillor Keefe.
Thank you. And again, I just want to state my support for both of the applicants in front of the in front of us, and the reason I say is, I, I do, I do understand when it comes to the elected office, that there, there is a real conflict. I don't, I don't think that a cheerleading coach acting as a social worker, there's really true conflict there, or a basketball coach that works in the DPW, I just can't, I just don't see the conflict. I could understand if she, if she was the, if she was an elected official, and she was voting on those budgets and things like that, that would, that would be something that I would understand as a conflict. I don't think, I think most of us would agree. Or if she was, you know, please don't take this as an insult, she was making, you know, $150,000, $200,000 as a social worker, maybe volunteering that time wouldn't be so bad. I highly doubt that's the case. So I'll be 100% in favor of both these employees getting their, their stipend. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Counsel Fiori?
I think it just should be noted that this is just a stipend.
That's all.
It's not a position, it's, it's just a stipend.
It's a stipend, that is correct. Any other comments?
Mr. President, just a point of inquiry. If we've already voted on all coaches in Revere to be special employees, do these really have to come in front of us for a vote? They do? They still have to be voted on again?
Yes, on the, if you read the actual Conflict of Interest Form that was included in the packet, the instructions are included, those are from the state. The city council needs to approve, approve these forms.
Okay.
That being said, we're gonna take a roll call on this, please. And if we don't, do we have to do these individually, or can we combine them?
They're two separate items on the agenda, I would recommend that they're taken separately.
Separate it, absolutely. Counselor McKenna? Go right ahead.
Nicole, what do you get for the stipend?
After taxes, $800.
Okay.
It's only the assistant coach, so.
So it's not a regular salary?
No, no.
It's just a stipend?
Yeah.
The hours put in, like Counselor Keith says, is probably $5.
Well, when I was a teacher, I was getting a stipend too, for doing certain things, you know, as a class advisor, so I, I get it. I get it, but I thought it was a regular salary.
No, not, it's not a yearly salary, no, just for the seasons that I do.
Can we roll call the members? All the communication, actually?
On the approval of the disclosure form for Nicole Palermo, Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fiori?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna? Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo is absent, Counselor Rotundo is absent, Counselor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, the disclosure form has been approved.
And Nicole, I want to thank you for being present here.
Thank you guys so much, I appreciate it. Calendar item number 16, disclosure form by a municipal employee, Michael Machichi, of a financial interest in a municipal contract as required by MGL, Chapter 268A, Section 20B.
Any comments? This is the same. If there are no comments, we'll take a roll call on this as well.
Shall the city council approve the disclosure form for Michael Machichi? Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fiori?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna? Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo is absent, Counselor Rotundo is absent, Counselor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, the disclosure form has been approved.
Next.
Calendar item numbers 17 through 20 are appointments to the cultural council.
We're gonna refer that to appointments?
Calendar item number 21, motion presented by Counselor Morabito, that the mayor be requested to investigate the feasibility of launching a pilot program to identify locations to add electric vehicle chargers to public areas in the city. This program aims to add access to electric vehicle charging stations, particularly for residents without driveways.
Counsel Morabito? Thank you, Mr. President. So I put forth this motion because I think it's important for municipalities to do, invest in electric vehicle infrastructure, especially where global warming impacts the city of Revere most. But after doing research, I did speak to Julie DiMauro, who's the transportation coordinator. What I didn't know is that there are currently six stations that are accessible to the public, but when you go to the registry of electric vehicles to look, Revere is, the only station that is listed is the Tesla station on Furlong Ave, so currently the director is, coordinator is going to look into making it public so people can identify that Revere do, does have public stations, and I'm, I have good news that she's, they're looking forward to putting in more stations, and she was saying the cost is so minimal. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Morabito.
Mr. President, just as an FYI and information for you, Shirley Ave, in the Shirley Ave Municipal Lot, there are four stations down there now that we put in. There's two locations, and each one has two, two stations, so, just FYI, so I know we are looking at, into it and looking forward to do it, thank you.
Point of information. So the locations that she had told me, the ward council may know better than she does, but she had told me there were two charging stations at Shirley Ave, two at the Hill School, and two in the municipal lot, that is the parking lot right behind us, so.
Okay. All in favor, all opposed on the motion? So what?
Calendar item number 22, motion presented by Councilors Visconti and McKenna, that the mayor request the Board of Health and the Public Health Division to develop biosafety level regulations for the city of Revere. Further, that the city solicitor and planning board be requested to draft a zoning ordinance to provide for up to and including biosafety level two research and development facilities, including life science manufacturing.
If I can speak from the chair, life science buildings are becoming very popular throughout the Commonwealth, and I think we already have a commitment from him, Development, to establish a life science at Suffolk Downs. And I think that's one of probably many that may come about. And I think before we let this get ahead of us, I think while we have nothing on the books, I think it would make sense that we collaborate with the Board of Health, Dr. Kong, as well as the city solicitor, and the boarding, the Board of Appeals, or the Board, Planning Board, I should say, to work out an ordinance for biosafety levels. They range from levels one to four, and I'll let Counsel McKenna get into that, but I think it's something that we should begin discussing and really get ahead of before these buildings start being developed. So with that, I think this is gonna go into subcommittee, and, but, hold on, the councils are speaking, okay? And I would give the floor to Counsel McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to explain to the public the information about each biosafety level labs. Science labs are ranked from one to four, are selected, are selected based on the agents that are being researched or worked on in any given laboratory setting. For example, a basic lab setting specializes the research, specializing in the research of non-lethal agents that pose a minimal potential threat to lab workers and environment, are generally considered a BSL1, the lowest biosafety lab level. A specialized research laboratory that deals with potentially deadly infection agents like Ebola would be designated as a BSL4, the highest and most stringent level. A BSL1 labs are the lowest of the four biosafety labs applied to laboratory settings in which personnel work with low-risk microbes that pose little to no threat of infection in healthy adults. An example of the microbes that are typically worked with at a BSL1 is non-pathogenic strain of E. coli. This laboratory setting typically consists of research taking place on benches without the use of special contaminant equipment. A BSL1 lab, which is not required to be isolated from surrounding facilities, houses, activities require only standard practices. A BSL2 labs, the biosafety levels covers laboratories that work with agents associated with human diseases. Example, pathogenic or infection agents that pose a moderate health, health hazard. Examples of agent typically work within a BSL2 include equine encephalitis viruses and HIV, as well as staph infections. A BSL2 laboratories maintain the same standard practice as a BSL1 lab, but also includes enhanced measures due to the potential risk of a forementioned microbe. Personnel working in BSL2 labs are expected to take even greater care to prevent injuries such as cuts and other breaches of skin, as well as ingestion and mucous membrane exposures. BSL3 labs, again, building upon the two prior biosafety levels, a BSL3 laboratory typically includes work on microbes that are either indigenous or exotic and can cause serious or potential lethal diseases through inhalation. Example, example of microbes worked within a BSL3 includes yellow fever, West Nile virus, and the bacteria that causes tuberculosis. The microbes are so serious that the work is often strictly controlled and registered with the appropriate government agencies. Laboratory personnel are also under medical surveillances and could receive immunization for microbes they work with. A BSL4 labs, BSL4 labs are rare, however, they do exist in a small number of places in the United States and around the world. As the highest level of biological safety, a BSL4 lab consists of work with highly dangerous and exotic microbes. Infections caused by these types of microbes are frequently fatal and come with treatment or vex, or with, or come without treatments or vaccines. Two examples of such microbes, microbes include Ebola and Marburg viruses. This is the information the public should know. We will do everything to ensure the safety of our residents, and we will now start the process to have a voice of what will be coming to Suffolk Downs. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any comments from the councils?
Mr. President, on the motion, can we add, add the city planner into that group of?
Sure, absolutely.
Leaders, thank you.
Yeah. Any comments? No, seeing, hearing and seeing none? Comment from the public? Name and address for the record?
Wayne Rose, 19 Thorn dyke Street. Suffolk Downs was just rezoned for the purpose of this building, correct? Yes.
That is correct, from my knowledge. I think we, we, that was done last year, I believe? Was that correct?
I think it was done, it was just a couple of months ago.
It was done last?
Not long ago.
Was it?
Yeah.
Okay. Huh? Okay.
So my question is, it was rezoned for this, yet I've asked many of the councilors what kind of laboratory was going there? And no one, no one has a clue of, of what's going there, actually. Will animals, will animals be tested in this building?
Mr. Rose, that's a good question. I think what we, I, I can't answer that, because I, I don't have the specifics, which we are looking for as well. And then, once we do have that, I'm sure Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Will come before us and discuss that in detail as well. So this ordinance is just, to get started, on making some rules and regulations that these developers that are coming in, looking to put life science in the city of Revere, okay, would have to abide by. So it's the early stages.
An ordinance is not a law, correct? So this can change, no matter what you say.
We can, we can, we've changed many ordinances throughout here, throughout the year and throughout, you know, the council, so yes.
Many of them are enforced also.
And that, okay, but, yes, it will have to be enforced as well.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. President, may I say something to Wayne? Wayne, we're just, we're trying to start the process. I think what happened, what, what we all realized is, when the metas came to Revere Beach, we were clueless, and that's the truth. I was clueless, I don't know about anybody else. I didn't know they were going in because it was COVID, and they did it while we were in COVID restrictions, so.
They did it to us.
What we're trying, what we're trying to do here is start the process, have a voice, and try to regulate what will be there. So we're, this is just the start, but we, we are trying to give a voice to the council, and we're trying to give a voice to what will be there, so I, this is the first stages of it, but let me tell you something. They can't put anything other than, if you just heard my definition.
I did.
If they're gonna put people there, residents there, and they're gonna have activities there, they can't put a bio level three lab there, or a bio level four lab there.
The government can do what they want.
No, but they can't, no, this is the restrictions.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, thank you. Counsel Morabito?
Just to put some minds at ease, what, what I did, the information I did get was that vivarium life sciences are used for like enclosed areas for animals and plants, for scientific data. From what I understand, that is not what's going in HYM development.
All right. Thank you.
Excuse me?
Name and address for the record again.
Wayne Rose, 19 Thorn dyke Street. Vivarium was used in the description of this, maybe you should read it.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, moving forward, I'm gonna put this, well, I think, name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Gina Cast, Salamone Castielo, and Steve.
Name and address?
Oh, 46 Nell Road, Revere.
Thank you.
You're welcome. What is going there? So it sounds like something is going there and got approved, but we, the residents, would like to know what is going there. Could you elaborate? She read a whole bunch of pathogens and diseases and, that most people wouldn't understand. Could you give us any kind of an explanation?
Can you pass that along?
Excuse me?
Can you pass that information along to me?
Well, you, you represent us, and you're for it, obviously, so. I'm asking you a question, that you obviously are voting for something that you can't even answer, as constituents.
Thank you, thank you. That's not true.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Like I said, this is in the beginning stages, okay? And I think it's beneficial to the city that we get ahead of it before it comes up, and we don't know what's going on. So this is in the preliminary stages, and, and we, and you will know, as soon as we get some information, we will, yeah, the, the public will know. Okay. Thank you. I understand, thank you. On the motion, on the motion, this is gonna get sent to Legislative Affairs, all right? Thank you. Next motion?
Mr. President? My apologies for the interruption, we have both the girls and boys teams in attendance now.
Excellent, I think it would be a perfect time to, to congratulate these young kids of our community. Yes, let's read the motion.
Calendar item number three, motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro, that the city council awards certificates of commendation to the Revere eighth grade girls and seventh grade boys' travel basketball teams for winning the Metro West North Division Championship.
Um, sure.
Ladies first, please.
Ladies first, well.
Yes, sir.
Let me, is this how it's, this is how it was done?
Those are boys.
Those are boys.
That's all right.
Yeah, Jason.
Right?
Yeah, these are the girls.
These are the girls.
Yeah, so read it this way.
All right. So, if you can have the floor, how's that? Go right ahead.
Where are the girls? Did you get them?
I got them right here.
You want these guys out?
Okay, come on, come on in all the way up. How's that?
Right.
Congratulations.
You guys just came straight from a game.
Congratulations.
You guys won. They just came straight from a game.
They did. Excellent.
Savage, savages.
All right. All right. So, I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make some comments, and this is gonna be both for the girls' and the boys' team, but obviously ladies first. I know some of you guys came straight from a game. That's, that's awesome. Yeah, right? Yeah, give it up. I've been coaching kids for a long time, and to achieve something on a level that you guys have achieved is an amazing testament to who you are as people, dedication, hard work. Your parents, I thank them for getting you to practices. I thank them for getting you to games. The coaches, I thank you for giving them the opportunity to play and guiding them in their game. There's so many amazing things that sports do for children, and as you can see, these ladies just cleaned it up, man. So, I am so excited, I'm sorry, and the boys, sorry.
We'll wait for them.
I got you, Salvi, don't worry. But I want to just say as, as someone who's a coach as well, I am so appreciative of the coaches, the parents, and I'm so, I am so proud of you guys. This is such an amazing achievement. So, I'm gonna read off the names individually.
Read the certificate.
Right after I read the certificate. "An acknowledgement of your extraordinary athletic achievement accomplished through perseverance, teamwork, and discipline as a member of the eighth grade girls' travel basketball team for winning the 2021-2022 Metro West North Division Championship." Let's get more of that. This is awesome. First up, Lily Martinez. Leila Hiduchik. Kate Morgan. Not here. Who wants to hold this? You got it? All right, you're responsible. Brianna Capune, is that how you say it? Capone, sorry. And the coach, Mr. Jason Smith. All right, so if the, the girls' team would just head out this way?
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Dude, trust me. Guys, I'm so sorry. I thought this was part of the, the next grouping, but I also want to present this I'm just gonna read this citation as, as I did for the, for the girls. "An acknowledgement of your extraordinary athletic achievement accomplished through perseverance, teamwork, and discipline as a member of the seventh grade boys' travel basketball team for winning the 2021-2022 Metro West North Division Championship." Luca Albano. Wesley Nunes. Justin Londano. Please forgive. Sofan Elabor. Oh, I don't know this name. KJ Abdullahi. We're gonna take a five-minute recess.
Calendar item number 23, motion presented by Council President Visconti and Counselor McKenna that the mayor requests the city solicitor to draft special legislation applicable to the city of Revere prohibiting testing on sentient creatures for cosmetic purposes.
I'm gonna, since I spoke on the first one, I'm gonna defer to Counselor McKenna on this one first. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to let the public know that I did call Tom O'Brien, HYM, and to come and do a presentation on what he is going to propose for that site. And he has had some, a couple of weeks, he was involved with the government center collapse, so he's dealing with that. But he said as soon as he gets that squared away, he'll come in front of the council and propose his, what he's gonna put there. This motion is dear and, near and dear to my heart, so I just want to read this to you. "This motion is also for the public's knowledge. In a huge victory for animals, the European Union, Israel, and India have banned the sale of any cosmetics or cosmetic ingredients that have been tested on animals. These marketing bans mean that companies all around the world will have to abandon animal testing for cosmetics they want to sell in these huge markets. Unfortunately, there is no ban on testing cosmetic or household products on animals in the USA. So, companies that make and sell their products here can choose to conduct tests on animals. As far as what is allowed, it is deemed necessary for the experiment. Legal tests include burning, poisoning, starving, forced smoking, mutilating, blinding, electrocuting, drowning, and dissecting without painkillers. These cruel acts can be performed on cats, dogs, pigs, horses, goats, mice, and so on. Going forward with this motion before us, we were, we are asking if, if the city of Revere can create a special legislation banning experimental testing on any animals for the purpose of cosmetic or household products in the city." Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McKenna. Well said. Again, this is something that I, I think we should, with life science buildings coming, I think it's something that we should get ahead of. And I know we have a lot of animal lovers probably in the audience as well as up here. I, I have a, a new 18-week-old pup that couldn't think about doing something like that to an animal. I probably have quite a few, probably a cat too, and, and then something else that's flown around at my house. And I think, I, I don't, I couldn't see any of that being done to those animals. So, like I said, it's, I want to get ahead of it. We want to get ahead of it, and it's gonna be a work in progress. Any other comments from the council? Start from this side. Anything? No? Oh, Counselor Silvestri.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. And I, I love the motions, and I think it's great that we get ahead of it, but I think it's also important that we specify, like, no matter what bioscience is coming, they have to have certified labs, they have to have specific policies and procedures in place. You can't just have a level one lab say, we're gonna start, and then the next day it's a level four. So, these are the fears that we need to subside in, in the residents and know that the, the people they elect are going to fight for them and make sure that the right bioscience goes there. But I don't think level three or four was ever even thought of in the city of Revere.
I, I couldn't agree more. And, yes, that, excellent fact. Counselor Cogliandro.
Yeah, I was not here on the council when all this happened, but I just want to go on record saying that I am not in favor of testing on animals, on people, terminal illnesses. I don't want any of that stuff here. Well, residents, people, right? So, but I don't want, I don't, I think that's crazy that it's, it's even being entertained as a thought. I just don't want testing of any kind like that. So, thank you.
Thank you for your point. Any other comments? Hearing and seeing none, this is gonna get referred to Legislative Affairs as well.
Calendar item number 24, motion presented by Counselor Serino that the traffic commission amend Schedule Eight of Title X to prohibit parking on Malden Street on the even side of the street from Aurelia Sylvia Drive to Hall's Corner. Lately, there has been an increase of people parking at the bend on Malden Street, causing a serious hazard for vehicles traveling toward New Hall Street.
Counselor Serino.
Thank you, Mr. President. It pretty much is self-explanatory in the motion, but just anecdotally, even last, this past weekend, I was driving down Malden Street, and I don't know how to describe, everybody knows where we're talking about, at the bend after the former Janino's Greenhouses, it kind of bends before you get to Hall's Corner. And at that bend, people have been parking, so it's, it makes it difficult because then you have to kind of move over almost into the other lane sometimes. And it never really was an issue up until, you know, fairly recently, the last year or so. But I would like to ask that we send this to the traffic commission. They're the ones who have the authority to declare it no parking, and that we, we ask that they do so. Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing and seeing none, it's getting sent to the traffic commission.
Calendar item number 25, motion presented by Counselor McKenna that the mayor be requested to create a memorial headstone in remembrance of all the residents who passed away from COVID-19 to be installed at an appropriate location.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. This really speaks for itself, but I just want to let the public know that 181 souls succumbed to the COVID virus in the city of Revere. And so, I just want the city to create a headstone in remembrance of these residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any comments? Hearing and seeing none? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered?
Calendar item number 26, motion presented by Counselor Fiori that the mayor be directed to conduct a feasibility study regarding the construction of a seawall along Mills Avenue in the Riverside area.
Mr. President?
Counselor Fiori? My understanding is the administration is already taking on, looking into various funding sources. So, I would amend the motion that the mayor update the council as to the status.
Uh, over the last few years where there's been some debate and conversation on where the new high school is going, there's been hesitation to put, um, you know, significant financial upgrades to Erecola Park because if it was deemed to be a future set of a high school, there would be, um, a waste of resources. Now that that is not, uh, the case, I think it's time, and, uh, and I know that we have a very robust, uh, planning department that re-reconstructs parks and reinvests in our, uh, cities' resources. Um, Erecola, certainly the soccer side needs new turfing, uh, and that need, that is, uh, definitely up to be redone. Uh, on the baseball side, uh, backstops, uh, they're, it, one of the few high school fields that doesn't have, um, dugouts. Also, uh, investigate, um, adding addition, additional lighting. Uh, lighting, probably one of the more expensive pieces, a lot of times their ability to get grants, but also the ability to get, um, uh, union, uh, support or, uh, large, large lighting manufacturer support with putting them up. So sometimes it's just securing the lights. But, uh, I definitely think that the city would want to, uh, invest in, in rehabbing these parks to bring them up to the status that we all, um, requ-uh, wish to have. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Any comments? Hearing and seeing none? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered?
Calendar item number 28, motion presented by Councilor Novoselfsky that the Revere City Council approve the attached proclamation designating the week of April 15th through the 21st as the days of remembrance of the victims of the Holocaust.
Council Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, uh, I've been submitting this for the last 20 years to the city council, and thankfully, the council has been positive in accepting this. And I'll read the proclamation, it says, "Whereas, more than 80 years ago, 6 million Jews were murdered in the Nazi Holocaust as part of a systematic program of genocide, and millions of other people perished as vic- victims of Nazism. And whereas the people of the city of Revere should always remember the atrocities committed by the Nazis so that such horrors never are repeated. And whereas the people of the city of Revere should continually rededicate themselves to the principles of equal justice for all people. And whereas the people of the city of Revere should remain, remain eternally vigilant against all tyranny and recognize that bigotry provides a breeding grant-ground for tyranny to flourish. And whereas April 19th has been designated pursuant to an act of Congress and internationally as a day of remembrance of the victims of the Nazi Holocaust known, known as Yom Hashoah. And whereas it is appropriate for the people of the city of Revere to join in the international commemoration. And now therefore, I, Brian Arigo, Mayor of the city of Revere, do proclaim that in memory of the victims of the Holocaust and in the hope that we will always strive to overcome prejudice and inhumanity through education, vigilance, and resistance, that the week of April 15th through April 21st, 2022, is hereby designated as the days of remembrance of the victim, victims of the Holocaust. This proclamation is given at this Revere City Hall this 11th day of April in the year of 2022, and it's signed by Ashley Melnick, our city clerk, Brian Arigo, Mayor, and submitted with Ira Novoselfsky, Ward Two Counselor. Mr. President, as everybody knows, this is close to my heart. And in connection with this, it's terrible, not only with the Holocaust that happened over 80 years ago, but what's happening in the Ukraine today, and what has happened in many other countries over the past, say, 20 years. The genocide is horrible. We are lucky here in the United States that things are under control, but we still have to let people remember and remember wholeheartedly, not the current year, but through their futures, their grandchildren, their children, and their relatives. That this is not acceptable in any way. So I submit this, and, uh, I ask that this be approved by the Revere City Council, and this is also in a historic time that not only are we honoring the remembrance of the Holocaust, but we're also having during the same week Passover. And we also have to acknowledge, which is very historic at this time, that we have Ramadan going on, we have the Cambodian New Year going on, and I know this is going to be mentioned later, but Easter is going on. This is historic that all four holidays are coming at exactly the same time. So it's an honor to present this, and hopefully the Revere City Council will accept it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Novoselfsky. Uh, any comments? Hearing and seeing none? Motion to approve? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered? Uh, before we end tonight's meeting, we have a couple of point of personal privilege. Let's start off with, uh, Councilor Sylvesteri.
Thank you, Councilor. Um, so I just want to commend the city of Revere, um, city council, Mayor Arigo, uh, the Revere Fight Department, Police Department, the military posts here within the city, um, in the city of Winthrop, the state police. Um, August 1st, 2021, um, a family, uh, from Revere, the McMcann family, got their son flown home for, uh, the first time in 70-plus years. Um, speaking on, uh, the atrocities of the Nazis, um, Sergeant McMcann was shot down in title, Operation Title Wave over Romania, um, taking out a crucial Nazi war effort. His plane was shot down, his remains were never found until 2017. At, um, his remains were exhumed and sent to, uh, Air Force Base in Nebraska. The McMcann family was identified in, and April 9th, this past Saturday, uh, Staff Sergeant McMcann was laid to rest. And, um, again, I'd like to commend the city for the support that they gave the Veterans Office in, uh, making that all come to fruition. Thank you.
Congratulations on a, uh, Council Sylvesteri, congratulations on a job well done. Uh, another point of personal privilege, Council Serino.
Before we move on to my point of personal privilege, if we might, as a council, take a moment of silence for Staff Sergeant McMcann. I know he may have passed away 78 years ago, but I think it's appropriate. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. And the point of personal privilege that I wanted to bring up was just to simply wish, uh, the community, those who celebrate in Revere, a very happy Easter. I know Councilor Novoselfsky mentioned, uh, Passover also, and Ramadan is happening as well, um, but just a sincere happy Easter to all those who celebrate in the city. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Council Serino. Council Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I know I read the proclamation, but that was sort of in the, uh, the nega- kind of a negative remembrance side, but just for the current year, I want to wish, uh, all my friends a happy Passover, and, uh, those for Easter and Cambodia and New Year and Ramadan Kareem. Thank you.
And this concludes the April 11th, uh, city council meeting. The next meeting will be, um, on April 25th. Thank you. Happy Easter. And motion to adjourn.